I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, I will turn it over to our superintendent of schools to start our public hearing on the 2018-19 budget.
Great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Hanna. We've had a thorough and comprehensive budget development process that began this past winter, and we had a number of presentations in this very room with a lot of pointed conversation. Presented the budget in a number of components, first looking at operations and finance, curriculum and instruction, then I presented a proposed budget on behalf of the school district, which was followed by another budget workshop where adjustments and recommendations were made, and the board adopted the budget on April 17th. There were numerous documents related to the budget posted on the district website. If you follow the links to the 1819 budget and voter information, lots and lots of documents there. All the presentations are there. Additionally, if you go to Board Docs, there are links to all of the presentations that I referenced earlier. At the end of the day, we presented a budget that was grounded in district goals and priorities, a budget that, as you can see before you, is tax cap compliant. It is a total budget of $61,348,375, which represents an increase of 3.8%. We have an estimated tax rate increase of 19.41 per thousand of assessed value, which is a 1.4 or 2% increase. Of note, this is the first year we can start to look at comps in comparing budgets since the local reassessment across Greenberg. Aside from maintaining all of our district's current programs, the budget does include about $500,000 of new considerations that range from the expansion of our district clerk role to include foil and registration work, continuing with our work in communications related to the survey, integrating a new maintenance mechanic, which is essentially cost neutral, additional architectural fees related to our impending capital project, security initiatives, while $86,000 are noted in the budget, the budget contains $122,000 worth of funds to support security initiatives. It supports the second roving security guard that we added during the course of this school year here at the campus. We're beginning to budget for tax certs for the first time that we're aware of with a $75,000 investment on that front, and we're going to run a pilot to restore late bus here at the middle school, high school campus. On a curriculum side of things, we are also looking to extend our, complete our continuum of STEM education by having a true K-12 sequence with the addition of programming at the K-2 level. We are adding a much-needed guidance counselor at K-5 that will not only support and serve our students, their parents and the schools well, but it is also compliant with a state mandate to have a counseling program in place. And the final items worth mentioning are related to the restoration of athletic assistant coaches that were reduced going back during the financial crisis and the creation of a seventh and eighth grade special class, one that is essentially paying for itself with cost avoidance of student program elsewhere. With that said and done, we've had a number of public forums here at the board level. Carol and I facilitated one last week at the library that was attended by one person. We had a nice conversation at the senior-
That's consistent with the prior year, I believe.
Consistent, and we met, yes. We held a forum today or discussion at the senior center. We have another one tomorrow night in this room at 7:00 PM, and then I believe the-
I don't think you were in attendance.
A dozen.
About a dozen, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, but we were between, also, they have snacks, so we provide snacks at other meetings.
Have we tried that at our other events?
But I've got to have to say, asked a lot of good questions and conveyed their appreciation and support of public education.
Are you familiar with them now?
I am. After six years, I know a lot of them. And then, next Monday, we'll be presenting to the village trustees. So there's more opportunities to learn. Any questions or comments can be directed, of course, to any of us at the table. You can always use the email address board@irvingtonschools.org.
Right. So, as part of our public hearing, are there any comments regarding the 2018-19 budget? If anybody would like to get up and speak, we just asked that you share your name and go ahead once.
Did you have the budget?
At this point, yeah. We're having a budget hearing, so it's a supplementary part of the meeting related to budget hearing. We will have a public comment shortly as part of our meeting, yeah. So, I think with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Advert the public hearing. Do we need a revocative or?
Elaine, we don't need a motion to adjourn there.
No, very good. Okay. And so with that, we'll move into our meeting. Did you have updates you want to provide?
Yeah. So you need a motion to accept your agenda.
So, yes, can we get a motion to accept our agenda?
Oh, move.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay.
Now we're in-
Great.
Yeah, so a few things to report on this evening. I want to extend my appreciation to our school community, including parents, community members at large, students and staff who participated in our district survey. In total, we have approximately 1,800 submissions throughout the course of the two and a half weeks that it was open. Our partner in this work, K-12 Insight, is currently in the process of pulling all the results together and then will begin to prepare a presentation of the results to the school district. I am currently working with K-12 to identify a number of dates and align calendars, and this will be a well-publicized public event that we will communicate widely to ensure that our school community is able to hear the results of the survey and to begin to process it with all of us. So more to come, but wanted to extend my appreciation for everyone's time and thought that went into completing the survey. We have a number of great events coming up in the next few weeks, and I want to highlight two that really stand out. First is an I-Ask/CAB event. We'll be hosting an informative community program on May 8th at Dowslane featuring Dr. Stephen Dewey, who's a renowned neuropsychologist, whose work has been featured on 2020, New York Times, and he's highly published as well. He's going to discuss the effects of addictive substances, drugs and alcohol on the teen brain, and he is really engaging. His presentations are rich in science, but very informative, and will keep folks dialed in. There's also going to be some interactive workshops for parents that we'll follow and some for students, and one of the sessions is going to focus on the topic of vaping, which is a growing, growing concern across the country. So I'd encourage everyone to consider attending that event. I also want to kind of tease an event that's going to be publicized in the coming days, that a group of our students, led primarily by Sam Roth, is planning a gun violence symposium, and it's been a tremendous partnership. It's grown out of an innovation fund grant through the Education Foundation, and the students have developed some tremendous partnerships with a number of community members, from the mayor to other folks that are going to participate within law enforcement, and we actually are pretty excited to share that Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins is going to be our keynote address on, or their keynote address on that evening. And it'll be followed by a panel that will have conversation in and around the topic of gun violence, and it will include subject matter experts, some local residents, law enforcement, and another individual from our community who's passionate on the subject, a parent resident actress, Sarah Winter, is going to participate as well. So look for some communications coming out in the coming days, but it's going to be held on May 23rd at 7:30 in the Town Hall Theater. And our own Mr. Hanna, I know, is lending his production-
I'm going to work with Sam and make him a short film with students, yeah.
So it's so exciting, very exciting. So look for more information. Not only will it be a powerful event to go and learn and reflect on the topic, but it is certainly an opportunity to support the passions of our students in the Irvington schools. Then, just a reminder, Election Day is just around the corner, two weeks from tonight. As I referenced already, Carol and I have been completing our budget tour with a couple more opportunities around the bend. Our budget newsletter will be hitting your mailboxes in the coming days, so if you're looking for information, please check that out. There's also, I didn't reference it earlier, but there's an FAQ published on the website related to the budget. There's still opportunity to register to vote. If you haven't done so, you can contact Ms. Cardia, and that information is also posted on the district website. There is just so much happening this time of year, so really, please, stay dialed into school newsletters, the district newsletter, PTSA newsletters, not only the great events that I mentioned, but there's lots of great opportunities just to come out and enjoy the talents of our students with spring concerts, the Main Street School Play and so on.
Art shows Thursday.
Art shows, yeah, absolutely, and band concerts this Thursday night. So, please come on out, support our students, support our programs, and enjoy their talents. I know Ms. Stein had a couple things to share this evening.
Sure, so I just give an update on the capital project planning that we're doing, and we've been working with our Buildings and Grounds Committee of the Board, and now we're taking it out to a larger committee. That committee will start by meeting actually tomorrow with a kickoff meeting, kind of an overview, and then have four meetings in the month of May and June to really get into the details of starting the planning process. The committee will be made of stakeholders from all of the different factions of our community, including the administration, the board, the teachers, CSEA, custodial units, and also community members at large who have requested to be on it, and then we were able to, I think, we picked almost, well, most of them had applied, maybe one or two that we couldn't take, but we picked a lot of people there. And we're also involving the PTSA. And then finally, our strategic partners, which is the architect, construction management firm, our security consultant and our technology specialist, Edgitech. So, the construction management, you're actually appointing tonight in tonight's meeting. While we don't have a contract yet, that's like an intent to start, and that's fine. And so that's the goal. The goal is really for the committee to start really developing that scope of work that will ultimately be under consideration by you for what we're going to include in our project.
Great, thank you.
And I guess I might want to give an update on the food service bid as well, because that's also going on. So the food service bid, as I mentioned before, is a big undertaking, and we're changing some of our requirements this year for the next contract. The contract itself is completed. It's up at SED for review. That's a process that has to go through. They have to agree to it before you can actually go out to bid. Our intended date is May 15th. We may actually be able to push that up a little bit, depending on when the SED review is done and assuming I can get the advertising in the paper quick enough. I can't speak to the specifics, but because it would be unfair competition if I announce anything in the public right now, but I can tell you that we were listening to the comments from the wellness committee, from the survey, the informal and the previous survey, and also from the students, the Destination Imagination students that I referenced once before. We took a lot of their feedback and we've incorporated it into our specs. So I was actually grateful for all that feedback. It was very helpful to do this, and I think we've come up with a solution that will make, will enhance the offering, will focus on healthy eating, which is what the Destination Imagination project was about, and will strike a balance between the economics of running a food service program and, you know, the healthy eating that we need, the balance.
Great, thank you for doing that. Very good. Well, you know what I'd like to do if the board doesn't mount?
Dr. Core, which is going to-
I'm so sorry.
I didn't see the movement forward.
It's always busy.
Well, I did, and then Carol was like, oh, wait, I'll tell you about this. I'm like, all right, go back, all right.
That's why I missed the signal, okay.
Nothing, I just want to share, some of you may have already seen, on May 18th, the Rivertown parents are, we in Irvington are hosting an event that last year was held in Dobbs Ferry on their campus, and it's Family Tinker Night or Tinkering, and it's an opportunity for K-5 students to come and explore hands-on STEM STEAM activities. It fills up fast. I want to say it started, registration started today, May 1st. And I went last year, and it was a, it was really a great event. You can just see the level of interest and the numbers of kids that were there and just engaging in all of these hands-on activities that does everything that we're talking about, right, inquiry and curiosity and just giving kids a chance to explore. So we are happy to be hosting it here. It'll be right here in the Mora Gym. And it is limited, and it is open, obviously, to the Rivertown, so it is not just Irvington, but it's here on May 18th from 6:30 to 8:30. So I hope people from Irvington will join us.
Wonderful. One more thing? Well, seeing as it looks like we may have some folks who'd like to make a community comment, if you don't mind, I'd like to move our committee reports to after that. Is that all right with everyone? Okay. So, we'll move to community comment period. If you have a comment, if you could be so kind to use the microphone and share your name, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Would anybody like to make a comment?
Hi, I'm Matt Gavigan. I am a resident and a parent of a student. Thank you very much. This is a surprise stop for my daughter. I just really wanted to take a moment and express the disappointment about the lack of a teacher contract for so long. On May Day of all days, it just seems, and picking up my daughter here on the campus, it just seemed like something I really needed to do. I understand from the process, what little I know, that it's not a matter of you just all deciding, let's do it. I understand that there's arbitration and you have to follow the process, but I do, I do hear the 600-plus days, and I just have to believe that there's got to be a solution. And I guess what I would ask is that each of you in your capacity as board members just really do soul-searching as far as asking yourself if you're doing everything you can, and if you are, and the process is broken to the point where you, as board members, really can't do anything to further the process because of the way it's set up at this point, that maybe something needs to be changed. As someone who's married to a teacher, and I hear, as I said honestly the first time I heard, wow, 50% of the budget is salaries, 77% is salaries and benefits, and she said, of course it is, it's a school district. And I had to take a step back because it didn't, you know, the numbers are large, the percentages are large, but she's right. She's right that it is, it is what the district is, and I don't doubt that you all believe that and feel strongly about it. I just wanted to be able to not miss yet another board meeting because I was driving to a practice or doing something else and know that, you know, at least you've heard one person, because if you're not hearing anyone voicing this side of it, how would you know that people aren't content? So I really appreciate you allowing me to speak, and I appreciate the work that you do.
Mr. Gavigan, thank you. I mean, I want to just echo your sentiments. Every one of us here seeks what you're stating, which is to settle the contract. I think we've spent a lot of time with a sense of urgency and a sense of flexibility to find a way forward. Currently, we're in a mediation process, and we look forward to that being successful and bringing us to a settlement. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you all.
He's tall. Hi, my name is Michelle Soto. I am obviously a resident of Irvington. I have two children, both in the high school, and am the co-chair of LSA and will be the chair of LSA next year. I just want to put something on everyone's radar, so that's why I'm making this public statement. You'll probably hear more from me in the coming months. I have had some experiences over the last, I don't know, year and a half of regarding placement, how children are placed in their classes. I don't feel like it's a transparent process for families. I also don't feel like it's a necessarily fair process for families. I don't think children would agree that if they are consistently getting As or A pluses that they don't have opportunities to go into honors or AP classes for, I don't, we're not even sure what the reasons are. So as I explore that, as I explore, you know, what the processes are for Irvington, because again, I'm kind of just figuring it all out, the answers have been varying. Again, I just want to put it on your radar, because I know that everyone here agrees that we should always be doing what's in the best interest of individual children. And so again, you'll hear from me probably in the coming months, but I just want to make sure that we know that that's something that has been an issue.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Are you speaking from a personal perspective, or is that a perspective of the partnership?
So I'm speaking a little bit from both. It did start with me. You know, I have heard rumors through the grapevine of other people just recently because I've become a little more vocal about it and not trying to go from the top down, so I'm not starting with you guys. I'm going through the kind of chain of command. Superintendent hasn't heard from me yet, so he knows I'm going through the chain of command. And in going through this process, trying to figure out what the process is and how these decisions are made, and again, the fact that my child has 100 average in a class and doesn't have the opportunity to be in an AP, we're all, again, we're trying to figure it out, but those conversations have opened up other conversations where people have said, yeah, that's actually happened to me too. So, yes, it started as a personal issue.
So is it a high school or a different grade or?
You know, it's currently at high school, but it did start in eighth grade because of the placement that was going into high school. So I had that experience last year, and now I'm having it again this year.
I would certainly appreciate the concern. It's an important topic, and as you said, working through the chain of command. I appreciate you saying that and those efforts that you're making, and as you look to have your questions answered with the high school administration, which would seem appropriate at this point. Certainly, Dr. Core and myself would look to support that dialogue down the road if you still find a question that hasn't been resolved or if there's a concern that surfaced.
Right.
Because we want to make sure that our processes are not only transparent, but fair and equitable.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
The one other thing I would share, as a board, have been real advocates of empowering our parent advisory council, because they meet monthly with the principal, they keep minutes, and so, you know, that's a great route as well in terms of those kind of conversations.
Part of my track, part of my path.
Great, well, thank you very much. Okay, appreciate it. All right. Well, thank you for those comments, and we will now move to our committee updates. We, I guess, is there anything to add to the Buildings and Grounds in addition to what we heard from Ms. Stein?
I think that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
All right. With the communications, we have some more specific dates coming out in terms of the unveiling of the new district website in early June. There's a lot of work going on right now to get the new website up and running in terms of the content and working with the different schools, and we hope, is it around June 4th?
Yeah.
Early June, to sort of have a soft launch, and those who are interested in following can be a part of learning about the process. There'll be an event in which our director of technology, Jesse Lubinski, will give an overview of the new website and for those who are interested, a chance to use the website in that first week, and then the following week, which is the 12th, I believe.
12th is our planned launch date.
Will be the launch date of the site. And then, because it's happening at the end of the year, we have a chance. We know that there'll be, you know, ongoing modifications along the way, but that gives us the chance to have the site launched and then going into next year, that it's hopefully in fine shape and serving. It should be, again, mobile-friendly, a lot easier to find the things that you're looking for. We already had a sample of just how easy it will be to coordinate your calendar with your phone in terms of the different types of, you know, things that you might want to follow as a particular school or multiple schools or other types of calendared items. So we're really looking forward to that. Additionally, as Dr. Harrison shared, we have the budget newsletter going out, and that again is, that and the prior one are newly reformatted, so hopefully, community members will see it in their mail in the coming days. Are there other items from our communications?
What kind of usability testing did the website go through to date?
The usability, so it's still, it's still in the process of, you know, moving over the content and working with, Jesse's been working with staff to orient them to the site in terms of usability.
I mean, you know, Andy, is there our students?
Right, I would say that the June 4th period will be that opportunity to work with the site directly.
Very exciting.
Yeah. Because, I mean, that's, yeah.
I'm very excited.
But I mean, again, as I said, the idea is that we have a three-month period before the new school year in which, the idea is that it doesn't, no one thinks everything will be perfect on June 12th. We just hope it to be a new and promising experience with a lot of it up and running and the ability to make adjustments in time for it to be stellar by the new school year. Policy committee?
Yeah, certainly turn the-
Policy, we have been, last meeting, we focused on the Governance Handbook, trying to finalize a few of those sections. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, 7:00 AM. Confirmation for participation tomorrow with our policy committee.
I already said, I want to train to DC, so you'll have to soldier on without me.
Are we on?
Yeah, I'm on, if David wants to join us.
Is it for Governance Handbook?
Brain is shaking your head, no.
I don't have that.
No, it's just for the Governance, we broke away from that just to do that. And if we want, we could certainly look to find another date if we want to have more participation, or the two of us can edit.
Just letting you know, I have it on mine, but I didn't, I wasn't clear if we were actually going to have it, but tomorrow was supposed to be another session on Governance Handbook, and the next policy committee meeting is to return to the actual policies that are being updated.
Yeah, 4000. And, you know, and again, just to follow, because we have a couple folks who are looking to join the board with the election. If there's a clean version that we can get out or at least specify where to find it, it's a real eye-opener in terms of the operations and practices of the board. So maybe coming out of that meeting, we can post a link in-
It's, it's-
Is it on our Board Docs?
It's, it's from, I believe, a June or late May meeting.
I think we should use a more current version, though, you know, we've made changes since then. I think if we use the version coming out of tomorrow's meeting, you know.
We'll assess where we are and try to make something available.
Okay. Great. So we heard about wellness and any other items anyone wants to share?
Safety is this week on Thursday, which is our next meeting. Carol chairs or runs, I suppose, back to safety updates, I assume. Like Carol, trying to update the group on some of the capital planning and security measures that we're going to be looking into, Buildings and Grounds on the board.
Very good. Okay.
The only thing I'd add, Michael, that wasn't mentioned on looking at Irvington PTSA, the luncheon is Friday.
The luncheon is Friday. Is it still possible to buy tickets, do you know?
Yeah, there was last call, I emailed last night, I saw.
I think it was today.
For today?
Yeah, so.
And always well timed for Mother's Day.
So it's on Friday.
Very good, well, thank you for those bits of information update. I will now move to the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to accept our consent agenda?
So move.
Second. Are there any questions or related to anything on the consent agenda? I would like to thank the, there's a couple of items here. The PTSA grant for the art show, $2,477. An IEF grant related to Destination Imagination Global Finals is $4,500. And there's a donation to the Billy Star Scholarship. So thank you for each of those. And with that, could I get all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Consent. Brian did.
And with that, I think my agenda suddenly gets a little wonky.
Yeah.
But we are going to turn to-
Do you have any last comment?
Are there any?
Meeting notice.
Next meeting?
Do you have it?
The next meeting of the Irvington Board of Ed will be on Tuesday, the fifteenth, Main Street School to certify the results of the budget vote, board member election. And the next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be May twenty-second in this very room at seven thirty P.M. And we'll be looking forward to an elementary school year-end goal update.
Looking forward to that. Yeah. So with that, could I get a, a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing negotiations and particular personnel?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five-minute break?
Yep.